Buenos en Hafa Day, everyone. The Committee on General Government Operations Appropriations and Housing is now called to order. For the record, today is Friday, July 23rd. The time now is 9:02 a.m. Notices for this public hearing were disseminated via email to all senators and all main media broadcasting outlets. First public notice was issued on Wednesday, July 14th, 2021, and the second notice was issued on Tuesday, July 20th, 2021. The committee will hear and accept testimonies on Bill 121-36COR as amended by the Committee on General Government Operations Appropriations and Housing and substituted on the floor, introduced by Joe S. Sinagustin and Tina Rose Munia Barnes, an act to add a new Chapter 83 to Title 12, Division 5, Guam Code Annotated, relative to the design, build, finance, lease, transfer, and maintenance of Government of Guam 21st Century Healthcare Center for Excellence, which shall be called the 21st Century Healthcare Center of Excellence Construction Act of 2021. I'll read the opening statement on behalf of Senator Joe Sinagustin. Buenos en Hafa Day colleagues and to everyone who is watching us this morning to hear amended substitute bill 121-36COR as amended by the committee and substituted on the floor, which is an act to add a new Chapter 83 to Title 12, Division 5, Guam Code Annotated, relative to the design, build, finance, lease, transfer, and maintenance of Government of Guam 21st Century Healthcare Center of Excellence, which shall be called the 21st Century Healthcare Center of Excellence Construction Act of 2021. This will be the second hearing for Bill 121-36COR, but this public hearing will address the amended substituted Bill 121-36COR. The changes on the amended substitute bill 121-36COR are recommendations of Guam Economic Development Authority to ensure that the financing is not treated as debt or indebtedness that is subject to the Government of Guam debt ceiling, clarifying that the Government of Guam is the rightful owner of the property, and lastly, to make it clear that the intent of the Guam Legislature aligns with existing statutes that authorize GIDA to issue lease financing bonds to the healthcare agencies for the purpose of the 21st Century Healthcare Center of Excellence. This public hearing provides the people of Guam a method to have new healthcare facilities built. We cannot wait any longer as our healthcare facilities are showing signs of deterioration and have exceeded the years of usage. Amended substitute bill 121-36COR will mandate the construction of the 21st Century Healthcare Center of Excellence, that will stand a healthcare campus that will provide a new and modern home to Guam Memorial Hospital Authority, Department of Public Health and Social Services, and Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center. This bill will do more than mandate the construction of the healthcare center, but will also provide the healthcare facilities with modern technology that will give our island community and the Micronesian region a state-of-the-art facility. I hope my colleagues will support this legislation as the people of Guam deserve proper and safe healthcare facilities that provide quality care. Sidhuus Maasi. I'd like to thank Senator Pito Terlahe for being here with me this morning for this public hearing. Also like to welcome... Also like to welcome Bertha Tyran from the Department of Public Health and Social Services, Sissy Liu from the Office of Tina Rose Munia Barnes, also part of the Public Policy Institute, Patrick Wang from the Office of Tina Rose Munia Barnes and the Public Policy Institute, and Lilian Posadas from the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority. So we will begin with testimonies with Bertha Tyran from Public Health. You may begin. Please state your name for the record.
Hafa Day, good morning, senators. My name is Bertha Tyran, and I work for the Department of Public Health and Social Services. I'm a program coordinator. I'm here to represent Director Arthur Sinagustin. However, at this moment, I don't have any written oral testimony. I'm just here to answer any questions on behalf of the department. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Tyran. Ms. Lilian Posadas from GMH.
Buenos, and good morning, Senator Amanda and Senator Pito Terlahe. Thank you again for this opportunity. My name is Lilian Posadas. I am the hospital administrator, CEO. I did not get a chance to prepare written testimony, but I will after this. And my oral testimony is basically, again, to support this legislation as it was introduced initially before, and that really it is time to build the new hospital. It is time. It is, and I understand from the concerns of other legislative leaders that, you know, financially there is a concern, but, you know, ethically and legally, we have a duty and we have a responsibility to provide, to make the healthcare services for the people of Guam more accessible and more available, and that the new, the hospital as it stands right now, it's well established that it needs to be replaced. We don't want to wait for it to collapse. We need to get it replaced. And so I really fully support this bill, this legislation. I do have a few recommendations in reading the bill.
Yes.
Page 15, subsection 83, 111, in terms of hospital IT and building management systems. The last sentence there that says, "For foster compliance with Centers for Medicare, Medicaid Services, and the requirements of the Joint Commission," I say we will not say use the word "joint commission," but use "accrediting organizations" because there are various accrediting organizations, not just for the hospital, but for behavioral health. The lab, which is a college of pathology, they're the ones who certify laboratories, and I think that applies to public health and also behavioral health. They also have a different accrediting organization, so I'd like for that joint commission to be replaced with accrediting organizations. Also, in that same section, the sentence that says the requirement for a medical information management system, electronic health slash medical records, because it does also cover those for public health and behavioral health in terms of, you know, health information management systems. On the next page, page 16, item B, under that same section, 83, 111, with regards to IT, the third line with regards to the art, state-of-the-art technology generally accepted within the United States healthcare industry, because we're not dealing only with hospital. In this Sacan Hinemlo Medical Campus, we're dealing with the three major health entities plus a district also. So it's really technology that applies throughout the healthcare industry and not just hospital. The last sentence of that section B, "The specification shall require that all hospital systems are designed by the same software developer." I recommend we delete that because, again, there are many, many different software systems that not just the hospital, but behavioral health and public health utilize this. And so to mandate that via this legislation, I think it's not necessary. It is understood, and in the industry of information technology, there are many different software systems for information, health information. So those are my recommendations, Senator Amanda. And again, I just want to reiterate that we really need to move forward with this bill, and I hope that this legislative leadership will support and vote to pass this bill. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Posadas. I appreciate your testimony this morning. I also want to welcome my colleague, Senator Telo Tidigui. Thank you for being here this morning, Senator. Move on to testimony from Mr. Patrick Wang.
Good morning, Hafa Day senators. My name is Patrick Wang, and I was born and raised on Guam, and I'm a graduate of St. John's School. I'm also intern at the Public Policy Institute under Vice Speaker Tina Munia Barnes. Today, I am here to testify in support of Bill 121-36. I believe that it is time for Guam to get an upgrade on our healthcare facilities. The Guam Memorial Hospital, Department of Public Health and Social Services, and the Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center need brand-new facilities to serve the community of Guam. All these healthcare facilities have been around for decades, and there are undoubtedly structural failures due to the age of these facilities. How can we serve the people of Guam adequately when our facilities are hindering us from doing the best job possible? According to the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, there are many things wrong inside our facilities, ranging from incomplete fire sprinkler protection to outdated medical equipment due for an upgrade. In the same report, the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers gave us two options. Option A, which is to build a brand-new hospital that will cost $743 million, and option B, which was to renovate the current facility we have, which would cost $761 million. I believe the choice is clear. We need to prioritize our healthcare system, and thus starts with a brand-new state-of-the-art facility. As has been said many times during the course of this pandemic, our economy is only as healthy as our community. It is no question that the people of Guam need strong healthcare infrastructure to ensure accessible and available services. This is how we recover from the COVID-19 pandemic and rebuild our island. To conclude, I want to mention that Bill 121-36 is not only a smart decision for Guam because it will provide a better healthcare facility, but also it will be an excellent investment for the future sons and daughters of Guam. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Patrick. And now, Sissy from the Public Policy Institute.
Buenos en Hafa Day, senators. My name is Sissy Liu. I was born and raised on Guam. I graduated St. John's School, and I'm currently an incoming sophomore at Emory University. Thank you for letting me testify today on Bill 121-36. This bill is so important, and I've seen the need for it firsthand. For as long as I can remember, I've known that the healthcare system on Guam is lacking. While I was reading the OAI-GMH facility assessment, because of GMH's old age and condition of the mechanical systems in the facility, significant repair and renovation is required. Within the report, there are numerous extensive lists of recommendations to replace, refurbish, and rehabilitate the hospital, but what's even more concerning to me is the high cost that would need to be spent in the process. The two courses of action that are listed are to either rehabilitate the existing facility and life safety costs, and the first option would cost $761 million, while the second one would be to build a new hospital. And now, why would we do that? Why would we repair GMH when we could construct a new replacement hospital, which is an estimated total cost of $743 million based on current clinical operations and inflation cost factors associated with five-year construction costs? In the conclusion of the report, the point is very clear to me. Due to the assessment of the current GMH hospital, Guam needs to have a replacement of our current hospital. This is due to the extensive deterioration in questionable seismic strength of the facility, and a surface life extension or rehabilitation may not be the best option to meet the island's health needs in the long term. You see, this is not only for the good of my generation, but for generations to come, and we must be selfless and think about those who will be calling Guam home in the future. We must think of those who are not fortunate enough to be able to afford adequate healthcare off-island, and if there is an opportunity to better our medical healthcare system, we should take every and any opportunity to do so.
Thank you very much, Sissy from the Public Policy Institute. And now, Mr. Chair, for the record, I'd like to read the testimony provided by the Guam Economic Development Authority. Hafa Day, Senator Sinagustin and members of the Committee on General Government Operations Appropriations and Housing. I'd like to hear and submit this testimony supporting amended and substituted Bill 121-36COR. The Guam Economic Development Authority, GIDA, in its role as a central financial manager and consultant for the government of Guam, monitors and advises the government on financial options that can best support and achieve certain goals and objectives. We applaud the sponsors of substituted and amended Bill 121-36 on the time and efforts to work with the administration on addressing all the concerns raised with the bill and for allowing us to make the necessary amendments at the advice of GIDA's bond council. The bill proposes a pledge of $35 million as an annual lease payment for the new healthcare facility for up to 40 years. The bill further states that the first payment in fiscal year 2022 will come from the federal reimbursement of the earned income tax credit, EITC, with the following year's payments to come from the general fund. I would like to first state, for the record, that whenever a capital lease-backed financing is contemplated, the first lease payment is normally made after the facility is completed, usually in the second year after the financing, which is when construction and occupancy of the buildings are complete and ready for the healthcare agency to use the newly constructed facility. So the first lease payment for our first priority Department of Public Health and Social Services may not become due until FY 2023, or even more realistically, in FY 2024. Subsequently, the payment for the Guam Memorial Hospital will be due once they move into their new hospital facility, either FY 2025 or FY 2026. In addition, I would like to hear and give explanations on some of the amendments by bond council. One, we added a provision in the legislation to include GIDA as an optional issuer of the lease financing bonds as government-issued lease financing bonds are triple tax exempt. Two, to ensure the financing is not treated as debt or indebtedness that is subject to the debt ceiling, we had to remove the words "continuing appropriation" and add in the language of a pledge of the government. Three, to clarify that the government is the ultimate rightful owner of the property. And four, to clarify the intent of the legislature as it relates to existing statutes, specifically, A, Section 50103K of Title 12 of the Guam Code Annotated, which authorizes GIDA to issue the healthcare center lease financing bonds, and B, the issuance of the healthcare center lease financing bonds shall not be subject to the approval of the voters of Guam. To address other concerns specific to the lease financing, we provide the following responses related to specifically financing. One, amend the text of Section 83105 to resolve the ambiguity of how many program studies and RFPs are required. Response: There is a current study that is being conducted out of the office of the governor and facilitated by the governor's healthcare task force that will determine the services to be provided by the GMHA, as well as creating greater efficiency by centralizing DPHSS. Previous lease financing projects had one RFP go out for a developer who would provide the financing, design, construction, and maintenance. This scenario would require GIDA to issue a single RFP for a developer with the requirement that they finance the lease bond through GIDA as the bond issuer. The developer would still be responsible for developing the financing structure, complete the construction of the project, and provide maintenance and insurance for the lease term. Two, amend the bill to clarify that there is only one contract authorized. Response: As with previous leases, the government will enter into one lease-backed contract with the private developer. The lease agreement, as with previous leases, will clearly detail all the terms and agreements between the government and the developer. Three, clarifying lease term. Response: We suggest allowing the lease to run up to 40 years, as with all lease financing bonds, including the ones issued by GovGuam. A safeguard provision is included, which allows for an option to extend for five to 10 years should the government hypothetically abandon the facility, allowing for the developer to recover their funds by extending the hospital lease to another healthcare provider. In addition, should the developers secure financing with a federal agency such as USDA, their term is normally for 40 years. Once again, thank you for the opportunity to provide support to amended and substituted Bill 121-36COR. Should you have any questions, please contact me at 647-4332 or via email at joann.comacho@investguam.com. Sidhuus Maasi, Joanne G. Camacho, Acting CEO, Administrator, Guam Economic Development Authority.
Thank you, Senator Shelton. I know I asked my colleagues if they have any questions. We'll begin with the Oversight Chair of Health, Speaker Therese Terlahe, and followed by Senator Terlahe, and then my vice chair. Big Bird, come back to you. Senator Terlahe, do you have any questions?
No questions, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to take note on the presentation that was made by, I guess, Amanda. It is important that we look into the amendments that she had mentioned, because I think in marriage that we include those amendments, and also the input that was received by us, by GIDA, is very important that we undertake, you know, in marriage that we look at those financing situations. So, Mr. Chair, thank you very much. No question.
Thank you, Senator Terlahe. Senator Tidigui, do you have any questions or comments for the panel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good morning to my colleagues and to the panel. Thank you for taking the time to testify. I always appreciate when the next generation comes up and testifies, you know, and brings forth your ideas. A lot of it, though, that you were talking about was the need for it, you know, and I'm hoping that maybe you can come up next time with, how do we do it? How do we provide the funding for this? You know, what's going to be, what's the give and take in order to do something? Don't get me wrong, I truly believe everything that you wrote in here, Mr. Patrick Wang, and what your associate there also mentioned about the importance of healthcare, but I just wanted to let you know I appreciate your testimony, being here. So, Mr. Chair, having a letter from GIDA is not very helpful during this public hearing. This is the opportunity for us to ask a lot of questions, and we can't do that without GIDA sitting in front of us, especially I have a concern with the letter that they, the testimony that they provided us in Section 3, on the first paragraph of, "To clarify the government is ultimate rightful owner of the property." Well, we all know that the property isn't owned under Government of Guam, that it's owned under the Department of Defense. The federal government owns this. And in order to turn that property over to us, you know, it's going to take a long time to do so. I think there should be some clarification as to this Section 3, rightful owner of the property. And it's been stated several times that the plan was to lease this from the federal government or DoD. Lilian, after reviewing a lot of this and going through the first testimony, the first bill actually on the floor, you know, it was said that public health would probably be the first ones, if anything, that would probably go up. Right now, public health is, you know, spread out in different locations, but they are providing the service. They have a place in Dedido that they work out of. They also have the Enalahan Medical Facility up there as well, utilizing some of the buildings, and of course, the old legislature. I heard they're using that. So they are spread out. Doesn't make it ideal. But my concern now is the hospital, the aging hospital that is falling apart as we speak, that no matter what, whether repair it or rebuild it, the cost is going to be the same.
More.
Even more, yeah, more so. And it now, you know, concerns us because the employees that are at the Guam Memorial Hospital, having to go there every day and working there, is, it's a hazard for them in most cases. Not being able to even bring in equipment that can be utilized for patients on testing and diagnostic testing. Your facility doesn't have, is not equipped with certain rooms to do that. So I think that, if anything, it should be advocated that hospital be the first thing to be built at this point for reconsideration. It's outlived its age from any hospital. It's totally outlived its age. My concern to Mr. Chair, which of course, GIDA is not here to answer, or DOA is not here to answer our questions with regards to the $35 million, which we know that this hospital is at $1.6 billion, minus the $300 million that we still, at this point, don't know if the federal government is going to allow us to use our money for, has not been addressed. But we know that the cost for a 30-year lease, or even payback, is $60 million, not $35. It's a huge concern. Just receiving this testimony from GIDA, I'm probably sure that, you know, I'm hoping my speaking is allowing my other colleagues to go through this really quick to bring up some other concerns, but it sounds to me like this public hearing is going to go straight, this bill is going to go straight to the session floor, and then we're going to go into the committee hall, and we're going to see you again, Lilian. So maybe when you come back, or when we have the medical task force have these discussions that it might be now rerouted to the importance of having the hospital be the first thing built, most especially.
Do you have any further questions, Senator Tidigui?
Mr. Chair, well, I do, but there's no one here to answer it. So I'll leave it at that, and again, I thank you. And for Public Health, thank you for being here to answer any questions that we have. Sorry to put that on you. It used to be public health would be first, but now, after reviewing and assessing the real, true need right now, it's the hospital. And as we're feeling this rain come down, I'm sure the hospital is feeling it inside the hospital as well.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Senator Brown, do you have any questions? We're going to get back to the speaker.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Not so much questions. I mean, I think we understand, and we've heard, this is the second public hearing that's been held with regards to this bill, so we certainly understand the, and have heard the testimony. Certainly, thank you, Lilian, for coming again. I mean, I know you have a very busy task to do up at the hospital every single day that you're there, and I appreciate the testimony of Public Health. I think we recognize the positions that both of you are providing with regards to your respective agencies. And I have to echo the concerns that were relayed by Senator Tidigui with regards to the funding aspect, and certainly that's something on our side that we need to further deliberate. You know, she was right. We were looking at the figure of close to $60 million a year that's going to be taken off the top of the table, essentially to pay for debt service for a 40-year period, which is quite a significant long time. I mean, we have no argument about the needs, particularly if we were to prioritize. I think we can all agree that the hospital would be number one on the list of constructing a new facility. To me, at this point, adding on public health, even though, as I mentioned during the previous public hearing, Mr. Chairman, we understand public health needs a new main facility because of the damage that happened to their facility in Manilo, but I kind of look at that as secondary. There's nothing to prevent public health from pursuing construction, even if it is the existing location, if they're going to demolish the existing building in Manilo and build there, or anywhere else. I think we've kind of looked at the role of public health to literally be out in the community, as we have with their Northern Center in Dedido and this other center that they have in Enalahan. So I'm not as concerned about the issue of constructing a facility for public health because I believe there's more flexibility there. As we discussed with the issue of behavioral health, while we recognize they've said they needed additional space, I think that can be accommodated on their existing site if they wanted to build a parking facility and add on to that, or then, of course, because if we're going to have GMH move out of the existing site to another location where new facility is being constructed, the opportunity is there to address adjacent property that's being occupied with the hospital to accommodate mental health. But the expectation, certainly, Mr. Chair, that we're going to do this in one big fell swoop and fund automatically this amount for a 40-year period and include maintenance, which, yes, is very critical and very important. To me, at this time, I have reservations about that. As I mentioned, I have no problem moving forward with the construction of a new hospital facility, but I'm not inclined to support the construction of all three facilities adjacent to each other. I mean, we keep using the Center of Excellence, and while it sounds wonderful as we say it, I think the most recent public discussions that we've had here in this very public hearing room with regards to medical malpractice has brought to issue the light that there's so much other issues affecting our healthcare system on Guam that is not just related to the physical infrastructure of the building. And yes, we recognize... to the physical infrastructure of the building. And yes, we recognize, you know, that the old GMH is aging. We recognize there's a lot of maintenance issues that need to be addressed, and certainly with modern medicine and technology. The facility is not designed at this point to accommodate that, to the maximum opportunity I'm sure that our public and our healthcare professionals would like to see. But I think we need to move cautiously with regards to this. And as I mentioned, I'm open to dialogue in discussing the issue with a new hospital construction, but also, Senator Tello mentioned, we don't know what we're looking at. We've heard that there may be several other locations that are being discussed, but you know, we'd like to hear more about that. Where are we exactly looking at constructing? What's involved with the physical property? Then it gives us a better idea of what we're building on, and are we going to end up, long-term, costing our people more money than we need to? And the other thing, too, with regards to the testimony from GIDEA, and certainly, I also concur, it would be nice to have the deputy here to provide not just a testimony, but a written testimony, but also to be able to respond and answer questions. But the very fact that we're looking at this issue of saying, oh, we don't want to use the language to make this part of the debt service. We want to use this, this comment here, it says, "To ensure the financing is not treated as a debt or an indebtedness that is subject to the debt limit, we had to remove the words continuing, we had to remove the words continuing appropriation and add the language of a pledge of the government." We all know that we are not that far from our debt ceiling. Either way, however you want to call it, we are looking at a long-term commitment that we are indebted the people of Guam, too. And I think we need to be more mindful of how we're doing that, and how much money we're taking off the table. You know, I would love to have the Cadillac of everything, but can our people afford it, and what are we sacrificing with regards to that? Particularly because we recognize there's other issues with regards to quality healthcare, including providing the equipment that's needed, the medicines that are needed, and more importantly, also, the healthcare professionals and specialties that are needed. And so, I just want to add that for the record, Mr. Chairman, because I, you know, I understand we all love new, the new buildings, the new cars, the, you know, that's nice, but when the price tag's 40 years old, and 40 years from now, the young people that came here to testify are going to be in the senior years of their lives already. So, I think we need to be very careful how we move forward with regards to this issue, and I think we need to also be financially very responsible, because right now, while we look like the money is falling from the sky like the rain this morning, we don't know where we're going to be a year, two, or three from now, while we're entering into such long-term debt. And of course, it's been the history of the government of Guam, that we take debt service off the table before we address appropriations for anything else. So, this is money that we're tying up without really a clear idea of what we're going to have to deal with and financially be obligated to moving forward. With that, Mr. Chairman, thank you for the opportunity to comment on this.
All right. Thank you. Senator Perez, do you have any comments or questions you want to pose to the panel?
Good morning, and thank you, Mr. Chair. So, I guess, I'm hearing, I reiterate a lot of the concerns of the previous speakers, in regards to the, I guess, to me, the priority is the hospital, right? We really need a new facility, and I think, however built, however formed this bill takes, we have to ensure that we are focusing on that, is my thought. In regards to the cost, I mean, affordability is one of my primary concerns in looking at this bill. And I'm glad that there was some clarification, because in the substituted bill, in looking at it, it looked like we were breaking the debt ceiling, that the bonds were actually not lease-back bonds. So, that's something, that's an important clarification to make. So, I probably would need more time to review what GIDEA, GIDEA's comments are, to fully integrate into this bill. But in regards to the question about the hospitals, so, for Lilian, what is your take on the Army Corps of Engineers proposal? Is that sufficient to carry us through 30, 40, 30-plus years as a community?
Thank you, Senator Perez, but I just want to clarify, in terms of the Army Corps' assessment and what they recommend, they had two options. And so, I'm sorry, my glasses here are fogging up. The first option, of course, is to replace the current building, which means building a new hospital. The second option was to continue retrofitting and fixing, repairing the hospital, which is also a hefty price tag, actually more than what they assess for building a new hospital. So, to expend all that money to retrofit it, and to fix it, and repair it, there's no guarantee that it will take us further to another 30 years, because that building right now has really outlived its time. So, really, it is more practical and more prudent to build a new hospital. Given the new codes for hospital buildings and hospital facilities, you know, we might as well build a new hospital. It's better to invest in a new hospital. And as it is mentioned, the structure of that facility that we are in right now, you know, it's not all that intact anymore, and so, you know, we really need to move. And in terms of the concern raised by Senators Tello and Senators Joann, with regards to the priority, yes, we have moved up GMH as in Phase 1, along with the CDC lab and public health. So, Phase 1 includes GMH, the building of a new hospital. And we're working internally to craft the specifications for an RFP, for an A&E design, and my goal is to get that done by October, so that we can then, you know, solicit proposals for an A&E design for a hospital, because it's a very complex, very complex building.
And as far as the bed capacity, because that's some, one of the limitations that we have, is capacity of our hospital. So, what would this new hospital have? And that's, that was kind of like the basis of my previous question, is, this new hospital, is it going to project the needs in the future?
Absolutely, and we're using the, the recent healthcare mandates in terms of how many beds to determine for a hospital. It's two beds per 1,000 population. So, right now, we're estimating a population of 170. So, you know, we're, we're including a little bit more, because we're projecting at least another 30 years. So, we're looking at either 250 or 300 beds in that hospital. We're looking to make it a single room. That way, if in the event of any communicable or contagious disease, or even when patients come in and we don't know what their condition is in terms of infection, we've already pretty much isolated them in a single room. So, women minimize whatever is, you know, spread of infection. So, that's what we're looking at in terms of that hospital structure.
Yeah, thank you for that response.
Sure.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I'll look over the documents a little bit more, and maybe have questions a little later. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you. Madam Speaker, do you have any question for the panel?
Yes, thank you very much. Thank you for your testimony this morning, and I agree with your assessment that we need a new hospital, and we should not wait on that, so that we move forward with a new hospital and building a new one. And so, of course, we're here today regarding the financing of it, right? Because I think we all agree that we want a new hospital, and we're just here now to finesse the financing of that. So, the bill was amended, a lot of it pursuant to the recommendations of GIDEA, and unfortunately, yeah, I wish they were here as well, because I think it's their changes to the bill that I like to ask some questions on, but while, but while we have public health and GMH here, we've also asked some questions. So, my first question, just in going in the order of the bill, would be, this change from a 40-year term, I mean, it was a 30-year term, changing to a 40-year term, I wanted to know what the impact of that would be fiscally, because, you know, I'm guessing that you extend the term out, we're just going to be paying more over the long run, probably. And I just wanted that to be confirmed by a fiscal note or something else, but I think that's still pending. And GIDEA's explanation is that, because if we're going to lease or get some financing through USDA, they, they normally agree to a 40-year term. But I, yeah, I just want to know how that affects any other type of term. And I see that they used 40 years for bonds as well, so I wanted to know the impact of that. So, the bill also includes bond, the option for bond financing in addition to lease-back. And they had testified before that bond financing might be cheaper in the long run, but they, of course, were concerned about our, our debt ceiling, and that financing the entire properties would exceed our debt ceiling. I guess I wanted to ask them. So, right here in the bill, we're financed, we're proposing, or we're allowing them to finance 600 million from bonds, and I thought that the debt ceiling only accommodated less than that. So, I wanted to clarify that with GIDEA. I guess we'll save our GIDEA questions. I'm not sure what's happening, but, okay. The other one is, you know, we talked about, we're authorizing by this bill that the government of Guam lease to GIDEA, or the contractor, the real property of the government of Guam. And yeah, I wanted to clarify, right, if we're talking about lands that are owned by, by the Department of Defense, if they are going to be bypassing the Ancestral Lands Commission, or if it's possible to get these lands to the ancestral lands owners, and have them be the one to lease to the contractor or GIDEA, so that they can also benefit from their ancestral lands. And then we're talking about this $1 million for the reuse study, which this is to do a study regarding the existing GMH inpatient hospital, and converting that to another government facility. I have no objection to a study on how to reuse that facility. I guess my issue would be just, is this $1 million, it says from the general fund? I would just propose that this maybe be separated from the bill, and, you know, just treat it separately. There's no need to tie this up. Well, I guess I just want to clarify, too. So, it looks like this is not going to be financed, this is going to be just straight out from the general fund, but I don't know, maybe it's more efficient if we just separated it from, from this bill. After, after the determination of where the new hospital will be, then this will kick in separately. And this is really important. So, on page 10 of the bill, it says that in order to come up with the RFP, under the supervision of Ilha Slaturo in Guam, GIDEA, in consultation with healthcare agencies of Guam administrators and directors, shall utilize the program study of all healthcare agencies, and the Army Corps of Engineers study, assessment, and the Guam Fire Department, to identify and prioritize potential projects to be completed. So, I wanted to know from public health, what is the status of the healthcare, or the program study for public health?
Hi, Senator.
Good morning.
When you talk about the program study, are you referring to the one for our facility that in Mingilau, or?
I don't know. That's what I want to know. It says in the bill, they're going to utilize the program study of all healthcare agencies, and I wanted to know where that is. Because they're supposed to use that to build the RFP.
My apologies, Senator. I don't have that information. I'm going to have to get back to you on that.
Okay. Yeah, I think this is the most crucial part of anything we're going to see, is really these program studies. I'm assuming this is going to tell us, like what the administrator of GMH has said, what capacity we're looking for, right, and what needs we have. What is the benefit of putting this one facility together with the hospital facility and all of that? Should, should be very clear, so that we know, you know, that if we're paying more to combine these facilities together, that we're doing it because of an analysis, right, that, because we've done a study, and it shows us that keeping this lab next to GMH is going to pay off in the long run for all this. And we've talked about those some, but I've never seen them in writing anywhere. So, I am curious, what is the status of this program study, and if it's going to formulate, if it's going to be used to formulate the RFP? Yeah, I would really like to see that, and I'd like to know kind of the schedule of how those will be developed. And maybe, Lilian, if you could talk about the GMH program study, what would you say is the status of that?
As it is written, Senator Speaker, that it will be GIDEA who will be responsible to initiate the reuse study of the current facility. Once we move out to the new facility, how that's going to pan out depends on the data that they receive, and what really the needs are of the community. Do we need to have that facility for an elderly population? Do we need it as a rehab center for, you know, people who are struggling with addiction? Or do we need it for office space, for government agencies, so they're not renting, you know, in private facilities? So, again, it's going to be based on the study that will be conducted, how that facility will be reused.
Okay, no, sorry, my apologies. So, I'm, I talked about the reuse study for the current GMH facility, but then I moved on, my apologies, to page 10. I'm on 83105, and it talks about how we're going to develop the RFP for this whole lease-back system, right? And so, it says, in order to develop the RFP, the request for proposals, we need to have the program studies of all healthcare agencies. I'm sure this is going to tell us what are the needs of the healthcare agencies to be put into this RFP. So, I wanted to know the status of public health and GMH's program studies, like your individual hospital study.
Right now, I can't, I don't, we don't have an individual hospital study in terms of the reuse of the facility.
Not the reuse. No, this is not for the reuse. It's for the RFP, for the construction.
Okay.
For the new facility.
All right. We are, as I mentioned before, earlier, that we have an internal group, an internal task force in the hospital, taking a look at, and we've done a survey with the providers within the hospital, and also in the community, how they envision what services they would like to be provided in this hospital. Is that answering your question, Speaker? And so, we're still gathering the data. We're looking at also internally, what are the most common services that, you know, people come into the hospital and looking for? Why are they going off island? You know, for what reasons? Is it for cardiac thoracic surgery, for burn, for rehab? Those are the things that we are looking at to then put together the RFP for the new hospital. Did I understand that?
Yes, I think so. I guess, so, I understand that, and I appreciate surveying the providers and, and finding out from patients why they are most often referred off island or go off island. But, so, for me, I really want to be assured that when we're going to build the hospital, when we decide the bed capacity, so you came up with a figure, and, you know, that sounded reasonable to me. It's a formula per population, but I just want to know, so where, where did we get this, and why are we relying on this formula, right, versus any other formula? Are we, why are we not accommodating, like, I don't know, if we're calculating G R M C's bed capacity in here or not, or we don't need to? But I, I just guess want it to be formal, right, that we are relying on somebody's standards, accreditation standards perhaps, or as you said, wherever you got that information. But I would like that to be applied to every part of the program for the hospital. For example, do we put in that new cardiac suite that GMH has been talking about in the past years, you know, into this hospital, or do we not? At the time, they were talking about putting it in because it was a revenue source, versus, isn't a critical care piece that we need in this hospital, or is it something to be taken care of by another entity, right? All of that. I guess I just want to know if there's a study being done according to, and I don't know if it's accreditation standards, or what is the standard we are going to use? How are, you know, are we going to determine whether it's necessary, or, or it's just something we would like to have, right, and that?
It's a healthcare standard from the U.S. This is what they recommend, and it's not just you, but also...
But who's they, when you say, this is what they recommend? Are we following a certain standard? Like you said, there's different accreditation commissions, so I guess I want to know, are we on Guam going to follow a certain...
Let me pull that source again.
Is it an accreditation commission we're going to follow in building our hospital? Is, or is it a hospital, you know, facility standards that are...
Accreditation organizations do not set the standard how many beds are to be built. They look at the processes... They look at the processes, they look at, you know, the standards of care that we provide within already a hospital.
Right, you're talking about the accreditation?
But they don't set the standards as far as how many beds.
Right. So that's why I'm asking you, who sets those standards? And who tells us whether the hospital that we're building is state of the art? You know, that it's a center of excellence? How are we, where is that standard located and where? So that we can know when we're building ours or when the RFP comes out that we have met that. That's what I'm asking.
Okay. And I will get that information to you.
Okay, if that makes sense, yeah.
As far as the healthcare mandate that I use, the reference, I will get that to you.
Yes.
But as far as the state of excellence?
Yes.
As I mentioned previously, that we don't self-declare.
Right.
Ourself to be a center of excellence. We need to apply for that and look at the standards, how you get established or designated or deemed as a center of healthcare excellence.
Right. Yeah, I'm curious about that too, right? Because we want to declare ourselves a center of excellence. I would love to be a center of excellence. I want to know if that's.
Well, that's what we should strive for.
If that's something we can incorporate in our building of it, right? Or if it's just the services that are provided, I'm not sure, but we'll see, yeah.
But it's something we should strive for, is to provide excellent care.
Yes, Public Health?
Yes, Senator, hi. Although I haven't seen the study by DOI, like the hospital, we do have a team of staff throughout the department that's working on the planning for the new public health facility. We just completed our owner's project requirement outlining that was recently and that information has been provided to GURA. And so basically, this document will serve as the department's vision of how we want our office space to be at the new facility. And so with this document, it will be used to help with the RFP design as we move forward with the construction of the new facility.
Great. That's what I want to hear. What is the name of that document again? And can we get a copy of it?
Sure. It's called the Owner's Project Requirement. We just completed that recently. So now the next step in the process is for GURA to meet one-on-one with our divisions. And we're going to go through this so that way they can have a clearer understanding of how we envision our, our office space to be. And so I do have copies of that available.
Okay, great. And I had asked Public Health several times over the last couple hearings that we've had, for something in writing that describes the benefits of public health being placed adjacent to, to GMH, right? And what, what, what those benefits are. So they did say verbally what they might be, including, you know, consultation with, can't remember, they were social workers or, you know, other, and, and, you know, across all the services of public health to make them available to hospital patients?
Yes.
But yes, I, we, we really want to, it to be compelling, right? Because I think we are, we may be incurring additional costs to combine these agencies and we're absolutely going to be incurring potential delay to try to get all of this together, right? And I guess that's my next question, Mr. Chair, is the, the same section, 83105, on page 10, talks about the program studies for all healthcare agencies are going to be included in the requests with a S, plural, request for proposals developed by GIDEA. And then it talks about, upon receipt of the program study, GIDEA, in consultation with the director of the respective healthcare agency, shall solicit request for proposal, RFP. So I'm not sure whether this allows GIDEA to go one by one and do an RFP for, for example, Public Health, and then do another one for GMH, and do another one for behavioral health? Or if we're going to do one RFP and we're going to get one contractor for all of these things? And that's why I get concerned about the tying them all together delays one versus the other, right? And so we had talked before about, Public Health seems simpler, right, to build. It's kind of like you need an office building. I don't think you're building a community healthcare clinic or I want to, I don't know yet, right? But it's my understanding, you're building office and labs perhaps. I don't know what else. But so I would think that's less complex than building an entire hospital with all the infrastructure that you would need. And so I just wanted to know, when you said phases, maybe that would help to explain, could you just describe the phases? What you mean by phase one, phase two? Because does that mean separate RFPs for the different phases? What is your understanding, Ms. Posades?
That is the understanding and that is, because again, it's a massive, very massive undertaking. And so really, to make it more manageable, we will then, the first phase, as we had initially said, was going to be for CDC Lab and Public Health, but we recognized and we, we received a recommendation that really the first phase will be CDC, Public Health, and GMH. We're moving up GMH as a priority in the first phase because of the situation that we're in right now with our current facility. So we're going to, the first, when we do the groundbreaking in October 2022, the expectation is that we will have, and as I mentioned earlier, we're, I am pushing for the RFP to be published for an A&E design by October this year. So that will give, move it along in terms of the groundbreaking in October 2022 for CDC Lab, for Public Health, and for GMH. But of course, the construction for GMH, you know, depending on the A&E design, that may take a little bit longer. I think the Public Health and the CDC, since already they've been working with GURA, that will come, that facility, those facilities, those buildings will probably come up first. And while it's being constructed, we're moving along with the GMH, the A&E design, and working with the, getting a contractor, you know, another RFP for a contractor and developer to hopefully then construct the hospital.
Okay, so you foresee this and separate RFPs for the A&E versus?
For GMH.
Versus the construction?
Yes, and also for Public Health separately, correct?
Oh, okay.
Do you have anything else, Speaker?
Yes, Mr. Chair, if you would allow me. All right, yeah, I wanted to know the, the cost of the bond financing versus the leaseback financing? I just like to see a comparison of that. They're, they're authorizing 600 million under bonds, which, yeah, it's more than I thought we had available, but if it's available, then that's great. If it's cheaper to do that in the long run. So I, I'd like to just see the fiscal analysis of that. And then I guess I wanted to go back to something you were talking about earlier, Ms. Posades, about the, so in here, in page 16, 83111, they're talking about, as part of this gigantic RFP, we're going to also include electronic medical record systems for all of these agencies. And, you know, it took GMH several years to procure their, their current system to, to change from the old system to the new system and think you're still going through that. And, and it, it took years. And so I'm concerned that, well, well, requiring this as part of this RFP for construction of a facility, requiring that the IT also be involved in that, would that just set us back, delay us, you know, by, first you have to determine which system and help them to determine that. And I, you know, I can't imagine that building contractors are, you know, IT experts and so they're going to have to get their own experts. And it's the same thing that you've been doing all this time. I don't know. I'm just wondering if it would be more efficient to separate this part out and don't let it be part of this massive contract and continue to, you, you allow to either use your current system, convert it when it expires, you know, and the same thing. And you can still, by working with the other agencies, combine systems if you would like to. But I'm afraid that to tie it all into an RFP of, and the design of a, the entire building that, just, you know, based on what I've seen over the years, it might, it might slow it down. I mean, I'm really worried about that. And I, I want, I don't want to also tie each of the agency's hands to just proceed with the, the electronic medical records that they might have in place and update those as necessary. I don't know, that's something for your consideration.
Yes, yes, Speaker. I think that's something that we can certainly keep separate. And as I mentioned earlier, also, along that same section.
The accreditation.
To delete that specification, shall require that all hospital systems, you know, I don't think that that's necessary to put that in a, in a legislative requirement because, you know, every health facility such as GMH, we use multiple software information system.
Right, that's what I'm thinking too.
Public Health has its own separate, so, you know, again, you know, if, if it's the will of this legislative leadership to, to remove that IT section, you know, but certainly it is going to be incorporated.
Yes.
When we design that hospital, correct?
I'm sure you have to design, you know, wiring, infrastructure, all of that.
Those are all essential.
Connection, yet the exact software and the exact systems that you're going to use, hopefully, doesn't have to be tied into getting this all built.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, then, I, I, maybe I'm going to ask GIDEA just to clarify, between maintenance and repair, so we're also going to contract with the contractor for maintenance and repair. And in some places, they say maintenance and repair, then they say exterior landscaping and landscaping, upkeep of the center of excellence. And in another part, they talk about capital maintenance and repair. And I just want to make sure, what's the difference between these terms and that they're, they're very definable and that each of the agencies knows that it's still going to have to come up with maintenance inside? I don't know if I'm reading this correctly, or, or all of that. I guess I'd like to have that explained by GIDEA. It's just a, it's a term issue and make sure that the RFP is very clear what part is going to be done by, by the agency versus the contractor. And then there's a part here on page 18 of the bill, 83115, that talks about expedited permitting process. It says that the governor shall have the authority to take any and all steps necessary to expedite the issuance of any and all permits required for the development, design, and construction of the new facility. I just wanted to understand, what does this section allow that is not currently allowed? My understanding is that the governor has huge power. These permitted agencies are all line agencies, I think, right? Unless they're federal agencies, but otherwise they're, they're line agencies. To get permits, yeah, I'm, I'm trying to figure out, what are we authorizing here that's not already allowed within the powers of the governor? And I guess it's just, again, the, the overall financing scheme that we're looking at, you know, financing of 35 million annually versus the 60 million and this. I know we're still looking at other sources, so that's still understood. So I guess I would just, yeah, like to get an update on that if, if there's any. Is there any update on those other sources of financing outside of the, you know, this bill that, that we haven't heard yet?
I don't have any update on it, Madam Speaker. I'm sorry.
All right. No problem. No, I understand the governor on her trip is also going to be addressing that. She's looking at different sources, DOI, of course, DOD, everything she can. So I appreciate that, those efforts. All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you to both of you.
Thank you, Speaker. That being stated, I'd like to thank my colleagues and for those present today. The passes of substitute amended Bill 121-36-R will allow for the financing of the construction of the 21st Century Healthcare Center of Excellence. That name we can change. This will ensure that the healthcare facilities are equipped with permanent and safer facilities, which will have modern and improved technology for the people of Guam and, and the Micronesian region. It is important that our healthcare agencies provide quality healthcare services and facilities to our people and our neighboring islands, which, which substitute amended Bill 121-36-R addresses. I ask my colleagues for their support in this bill. I look forward to seeing the 21st Century Healthcare Center of Excellence rise. Since your testimony, the committee will continue to receive testimony. Please address your written testimony to the Committee on General Government Operation Appropriations Housing and submit it via email to Senator Joe S. Augustine at gmail.com or to my office located at Rand Care Building, Second Floor, Suite 3, 761 South Marine Corps Drive, Tmuning, Guam. Since your testimony for attendance today and your participation in today's hearing. And for those at home, thank you for watching the public hearing on Bill 121-36-R, as amended by the committee and substitute on the floor, is now adjourned at 10:07. Please be safe and have a nice day. Take care.